I'd like to welcome everyone to the Wycomico County's public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget. Ms. Hurley will be going through the proposed budget this evening, and then we'll be accepting comments at the end of the presentation. The individuals that registered in advance to speak will go first, and then we'll open it up to public comments from anyone that would like to speak on the proposed budget. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen, listening and participating remotely. As President Dodd said, tonight is the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 21 budget. A public notice was published in the Daily Times and posted on the county's website. Stand at a public hearing will be held this evening at 6:00 P. M. Our focus tonight will be on the operating expenses rather than the revenues, but the county executive's proposed budget showing both the revenues and expenses is posted on the county's website as well as a copy of tonight's presentation. The county executive has submitted to the county council, as required by the charter, a balanced budget. He proposes a budget funded by many revenue sources, the principle of which is property taxes. The budget proposes a property tax rate of .9286. This tax rate is higher than the constant yield rate, so a public hearing is required by state law, and that will be held at the next council meeting scheduled for May the 19th at 10:00 A. M. And looking at the expenditures for the operating budget, I will read each department name and fund number, as well as the proposed fiscal year 21 budget request, as shown in the proposed budget. After I'm finished reading each department name and fund number, I'll call on the individuals that signed up to speak in advance, and then if anyone participating on the Zoom conference would like to speak but did not sign up in advance, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call you in the order in which your hand was raised. The raise hand feature is located on the taskbar at the bottom of your screen. If you need to click on, you'll need to click on the icon labeled Participants at the bottom center of your screen. Then you'll click on the button labeled Raise Hand. Please keep your audio muted until your name has been called, so the background noise does not disrupt the meeting. We are asking that you keep your comments to three minutes or less to allow time for everyone to speak, and also, please try not to repeat what other speakers have already stated. So let's get started. Just give me a minute to pull up the presentation. Everyone should see the cover page saying operating capital budget, Wycomico County, Maryland, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. March this little bit. Okay, so starting with Fund One, we have county council, and it's $744,690. Fund Two is Circuit Court, that's $1,928,868. Orphans Court is $85,256. Fund Four is State's Attorney, at $3,737,180. Fund Five, Executive/Administration, $899,935. Community Promotions, Fund Six, $43,000. Fund Seven, Elections, $1,410,985. Fund Eight, Finance, that's $1,405,859. Fund Nine, Public Accountant, $96,360. Fund Ten, Purchasing, $276,355. Fund Eleven, Law, $347,175. Fund Twelve, Human Resources, $515,969. Moving on, we have Planning and Zoning, Fund Thirteen, at $1,718,992. Fund Fourteen, General Services, at $1,648,791. Fund Fifteen, I.T., $1,415,705. Fund Sixteen, Liquor License Board, $262,168. Fund Seventeen, Sheriff, $13,72,966. Fund Eighteen, Salisbury Fire/Ambulance, $758,014. Volunteer Ambulance, $3,249,858. Fund Twenty, Volunteer Fire, $2,224,349. Fund Twenty One, Corrections, $17,979,316. Fund Twenty Two, Emergency Services, $3,477,188. Protection of Animals, Fund Twenty Three, $367,506. Fund Twenty Four, Public Works, that is $583,667. Fund Twenty Five, Fruitland Water and Sewer, is not being funded in this proposed budget. Fund Twenty Seven, Mosquito Control, that's $201,346. Fund Twenty Eight, Gypsy Moth Control, $4,000. Fund Thirty, Board of Education, that's $57,689,823. Fund Thirty One, Community College, $6,060,632. Fund Thirty Two, Public Library, $1,519,295. Fund Thirty Three, Tri-County Council, Ensure Transit, that's $414,897. Fund Thirty Four, Public Health, $4,061,771. Fund Thirty Five, Government Office Building Security, $78,724. Fund Thirty Six, Extension Service, $115,815. Fund Thirty Seven, Community Access Channel, $128,866. Fund Thirty Eight, Office of Economic Development, $175,000. Fund Forty, Pensions and Retirement. Fund Forty One, Hospital Disability and Death Benefit, $403,153. Fund Forty Two, Liability Insurance, $674,000. Fund Forty Three, County Debt Retirement, $4,311,341. Fund Forty Five, Social Services, $3,793. Transfer to Other Funds and Contingency, and the total is $8,829,902. Fund Forty Seven, Fleet Vehicles, this is $340,000. Fund Fifty, Roads, $9,139,112. Fund Eighty Three, Grants and Mandates, $512,959. Fund Eighty Four, Teen Adult Center, Dove Point, $61,363. Fund Eighty Five, Maintenance of Aging in Community, that's $260,000. Fund Eighty Six, Commission on Aging, $750. Fund Eighty Seven, Life Crisis Center, $13,500. Solid Waste, Fund Fifty One, that's $8,556,500. Fund Fifty Two, Airport, that's $2,365,209. Fund Fifty Three, Electrical Board, $71,878. Fund Fifty Four, Local Management Board, $84,000, yes, but that's gonna be $1,193,393 for the total. We have Fund Fifty Six, Narcotics Task Force, $1,032,500. Recreation in Parks, $4,854,425. Wycomico Youth and Civic Center, and this is Fund Sixty One and Sixty Four, that's Fund Sixty Two, Tourism, that's $2,348,840. And then finally, we have the Nursing Home, and that's $9,5,156. We did have some people pre-register, I'm gonna let some more people into the meeting real quick. So we're gonna call on the people that pre-registered to speak first, so when I call your name, you are free to present your comment. Michelle Wright, are you on the video conference? Michelle Wright? We'll come back to her. How about Dr. Donna Hamlin?
I am. Good evening, President Dodd and council members and Mrs. Hurley. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a few brief comments relative to the FY21 Wycomico County General Fund and capital budgets. First to the general fund budget. As you know, in March, the Wycomico County Board of Education submitted for your consideration a maintenance of effort budget for FY21. We did so after lengthy consideration of our needs specific to our strategic plan Imagine 2022. We worked hard to develop a budget to support our strategic priorities of increasing kindergarten readiness, graduation rates, recruiting and retaining a strong workforce, and added this year ensuring safe schools. As you examine our budget, you'll see how our budget is fully aligned with our strategic plan. I do want to say thank you for your willingness in the past to provide funding above maintenance of effort. We do truly appreciate your support for public education and our strategic plan. This year's request for only maintenance of effort was done so first knowing that we could continue the implementation of Imagine 2022, but also in the interest of being a good community partner and understanding the needs of the county and other entities in our community. We did submit a list of one-time funding requests that has been revised based upon approval received from the Maryland State Department of Education, and that, and we ask that you consider funding those facility and safety requests that do not impact maintenance of effort. Finally, we were also hopeful that with our maintenance of effort budget request, the likelihood of funding our capital improvement budget would be increased. So I do want to speak very briefly to that ongoing process. I would ask that all council members review the information that I provided to the county executive's office and to the council president in a letter dated March 24th, sent through email on March 25th. And in that communication, I provided clarification on various communications, including what had occurred between Mr. Bob Gorrell, the executive director of the IAC, and the county executive. In that communication, Mr. Culver did go on record as supporting the Mardella Project, stating, quote, "Rest assured, as you consider various school construction needs across the state, that Wycomico County stands ready to support and fund an appropriate plan for Mardella Middle Senior High School. Unfortunately, that support is missing in the county executive's capital budget. And while it's highly unusual for the IAC to grant planning approval to a school system when there does not appear to be local support, with that written endorsement from Mr. Culver and communication that I have continued to have with state leadership, I remain hopeful that we will be granted planning approval next week. And based upon the discussion that I heard last night among council members and your legal counsel, including the expected grant funding for the airport, I continue to be very optimistic for the Mardella community that something can be done to keep this project moving. I can assure you of the board's and my unwavering commitment to the Mardella community and this project. And to that end, we stand ready to provide any information that we can, that would be helpful to you in future work sessions. Again, on behalf of the Board of Ed and Wycomico County Public Schools, I thank you for your ongoing support."
Thank you.
Next, we have Eileen Johnson.
Okay, sorry, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Hamlin, for saying that, that's very reassuring. We, Michelle Wright and I, who I think is here, I'm not sure if she can hear, I'm not sure if she has put the video on herself or unmuted or anything, I'm not sure, it's my first Zoom call. I think you guys are much more experienced with these than I am, but I don't want to take anything for granted, even given what Dr. Hamlin just said, which is very promising and makes me hopeful. I think we've all felt a lot of hope about this subject. And so I did listen to the meeting last night that you guys had, and I definitely had left with some impressions, and definitely was not feeling hopeful after that meeting. And some of you guys have spoken up for the Mardella community, and I think that some more consistently and strongly than others, and we really appreciate the persistence of some of you, and we're asking that you keep, keep at it on behalf of the Mardella community. I didn't even mention that my, that I am part of a group that advocates for increased investment in education in our county, and we just stand with the Mardella community. And I'm always just here to remind you why we're doing this, and, and I heard many of you speak about the importance of teachers this week and teacher appreciation, and Mr. McCain, we really applaud what you're doing with your Rising Star program and really, you know, walking the walk, and the spotlight that you're putting on teachers. So thank you, and I think now is the time to really put those words into action, and of course, with everything that's going on, you know, everything seems impossible, like we're not gonna be able to get anything done ever again. But I think that, from what I've heard, everything I've, you know, read about this and listened, and a big issue is just access to information and knowing what's going on and trying to find things here and there, and a huge issue is obviously lack of communication with the county executive and you guys, I don't need to tell you that. It seemed like the meeting from yesterday, it could have been from six months ago. It seemed like, basically, we haven't seen any kind of change, nothing changed, and to us, it looks like broken government. So once again, we call on the county executive to meet with the Board of Ed and the council and to just make it happen, and to the average viewer, and it frankly looks ridiculous to the average viewer. And so we're asking that really, I think that, from what I see all of you guys, what's possible is maybe you could all advocate for us, and maybe just more strongly for us, and don't stop, don't accept, to me, it seemed like Mr. Strasburg last night was saying that the IAC is looking for the state, is looking to hear that the county, or is looking to hear that the state really supports it, I'm, you know, basically laying the blame somewhere else, instead of saying, "We are gonna show our commitment to this." And we all know that the state will, will show up if the county shows they're committed. And we've heard very clearly from the superintendent that she strongly supports this, and we know that you guys support this, but I think we need more strong advocacy. And we asked the county executive to advocate with the county council for us. We know that there are the personal issues and, I'm sorry, the personnel issues, which also seem to be personal issues, and we can't really, nothing is changing, it just keeps happening over and over, and so we're asking you to find a way to change something, and channel some of the frustration to actually change things, and we, we need clear leadership, we need to not be dysfunctional, we need direction, we need partnership and compromise and working together, and we've seen the board step up, we've seen the council step up, and we need now the county executive to step up also. So I think my main message is that I feel like we just need strong advocacy and just a way, some way for the board and the superintendent and the county council to get in a room and not leave the room until we figure it out, at least the answer to Mardella. And obviously, the big issue of not being able to go to the bond market because of this personnel issue seems like something that, it's just paralyzing our government. So that's our perspective, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
We're gonna go back to Michelle Wright. Michelle, are you on the video conference?
I am, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Of course, my name is Michelle Wright, and I live in Hebron, Maryland, and I also live in the Mardella School District. My comments, I wish I could start out with, with positive comments, but unfortunately, I don't find myself doing that. First, as a taxpayer, I am disappointed in the lack of professionalism shown by the executive branch, especially after listening to the meeting from last night. It should be a standard procedure, in my opinion, for the county executive and the staff and department heads to be able to meet with the county council to discuss the CIP and the budget. I find it ludicrous that the council has asked to meet and no one show up. That should be a normal business standard practice. How are you supposed, as a council, to approve a multimillion dollar budget and CIP without being able to get the answers that you need from the people that have helped create this, these reports? I think it's an embarrassment for our county, and it's an embarrassment to be a citizen right now in Wycomico County. And I just, I guess I just expect better leadership, and I expect whatever the reasons are that, that if it's business or personal, they should be separate, they should not be tied together and have actions like we're seeing. And I find myself right now asking, what am I getting from my county government, and especially the executive branch? Our county spends at least a million dollars for the executive branch, and are we, as a taxpayer, is getting our money's worth? And now there's a request for a new CFO position in the budget at a cost of $125,000 plus benefits. We already have an unofficial financial director, an administrator, an assistant administrator, an unofficial attorney, and department heads, and, you know, I'm just completely against this new position that's being requested. I would rather have $125,000 go towards Mardella's project. And I would ask those of you that have tried to encourage county exec, or executive Culver to commit funds to Mardella, you know, can we take a million dollars out of our savings account? My understanding, we've got 40 to 50 million dollars in this savings account, it's a savings account, it's to be used, so how much more do we need in our savings account? Why can't we take a million of that, put it back in the CIP, show we're committed, and decide next year if we can really afford, you know, to use that million dollars? So, you know, I just, I'm just baffled by whether we're even having the same discussion we had a year ago. Couple of months ago, the Board of Ed suggested that we take some of the completed school construction projects money that was left there and reallocate to Mardella. I heard last night that some of that money's been reallocated to Beaver Run, which is great, I'm okay with that. My question is, is all the money being reallocated to Beaver Run? Is there any money left that could be allocated to Mardella and have it split between the two schools? For the past year, and in every hearing ever this past year, taxpayers have been told that we have to wait before any decisions can be made from our county executive branch. You know, we're waiting on current commission, we're waiting on the bond market, we're waiting on minimum wage information, we're waiting on the IAC. All we've done for a year is sit back and wait, and we are no further along than we were a year ago, and quite frankly, I'm tired of waiting. You know, last night, it was said again, "Let's wait for the IAC." What are we waiting for? Why aren't we making decisions, coming up with a plan, and moving forward? It just, it's just lack of leadership, and, you know, our kids and our community deserve And the truth is, as far as the bond market, you know, I said in a meeting last fall that I was afraid that if we weren't ready to go to the bond market, that all of our county projects would be delayed, and I was told then that, looking at going to the bond market, we're gonna wait and see, but we have all other ways that we're thinking about borrowing money, but they didn't know what those, what those avenues were, and now here we are in May, we didn't go to the bond market, and we're still no further along, and then I hear last night that now we're gonna wait, we're gonna double up on our borrowing this coming fall, so we're gonna wait six more months, all we do is sit back and wait, it's just totally unacceptable. During my time on the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Education, and the Greater Salisbury Committee, I was told repeatedly that people don't wanna move here and live here because our schools aren't adequate. They don't look nice from the outside, they're outdated, we don't have technology, they don't have the latest and greatest, but yet, here we are, trying to invest in our school system, and we're, it's a battle. I don't understand why we have to fight and battle to get our schools up to date when really they are the backbone of our county. It's, and my other question is, and my, my comment is, is that we have 25 schools in our county. The life expectancy of a school is 50 years. So every year, we're gonna have a school construction project, why aren't we setting a budget every year, what, pick an amount and budget a certain amount of money, because you know it's coming? Why do the citizens, and why does the Board of Education have to battle and go for a fight to get funding for our schools? That makes no sense. I don't foresee Mardella being put back in the CIP right now, because our county executive doesn't want what the citizens voted on. There was a feasibility study done, there were four different options submitted, the citizens spoke and voted, they picked what they thought they needed, and it's the county government's responsibility to help fund that. It's not for someone else to override, to, to just toss aside all the work that was done, that's not the job of the county government. And that's what's happening, and because of that, our students, our teachers, our Westside community has been waiting, and we're being delayed. I'm just not sure how much longer we're supposed to wait. But I can, I can guarantee one thing, is that I will continue to advocate for Wycomico County's school system, and I will continue to advocate and fight for Mardella. It's not going away, the needs are not going away, I'm not going away, and unfortunately, you as county council folks, you're allowing, you provide the, the, the ways that we can communicate and get our voices heard. I, I'm sorry that you guys have to repeatedly have to hear people like me, because some of this, I know, is, is out of your hands, but I am thankful that you allow us citizens a way of being able to voice our concerns and our thoughts, and hopefully, the county executive's branch is hearing this, because this is really who it's geared towards, because I, I truly understand that the county council can, only has so much authority, that much of this falls into the county executive's responsibility. So I thank you for your time, and I hope everybody stays safe and healthy.
Thank you. Just to remind those that have not already registered to speak, there is a raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen if you would like to speak. If you would like to speak after those that have pre-registered. Um, you can certainly use that feature and I'll call on you, um, once we go through the first list. Next we have Samuel Gibson.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Uh, so I'm Sam Gibson, a Salisbury resident, uh, Wycomico County resident, first, uh, library employee, second. Um, first, I'd like to thank Ms. Hurley for organizing, orchestrating this and keeping it smoothly running. It's greatly appreciated to see this. Um, I'm here today to encourage the council to maintain a responsible and realistic budget. I realize that we will be in a challenging financial times, but I encourage the council to continue and grow the support of education and community services. That being said, is my hope that you maintain the current funding of the Wycomico Public Libraries. Even before I became, began working at the library over a year and a half ago, I realized the importance of the library to the community as a whole. Now, after working here, I realized that even more so, given the community hub that the library is to Wycomico County. All of the residents that the library provides our community members are invaluable. Everything from a place where people can meet and learn, an area for education and continued learning. Resources for helping job seekers and employers, and most of all, a welcoming place to each and every citizen of the county. I once again, once I began working here, I found a group of dedicated employees that cared about the patrons and helped to learn and grow. They provided a wealth of services and programs on a very limited budget. I am also not sure how many people realize that the valuable resources the library was once the pandemic started. As we already had systems in place that allowed the county citizens to access online books, movies, music, learning materials. To help with learning and living at home. We also had in place a system where every Wycomico County Board of Education student from grade one to 12. Had a library card allowing them to access and their families to access these services online from home. We are a resource, we are resourceful lot at the library, but please recognize the value of the library to our community as a whole and maintain the budget for the library. Like all organizations, we are going to face a tight financial times in the coming year. And investment in libraries is an investment in our community and the education system and an investment in the future. Thank you for your time.
Next we have Ashley Teagle, Executive Director of the Wycomico Public Libraries.
Thank you. Thank you again to our county. Who has budgeted a $50,000 match towards the purchase of a new bookmobile for the library. As a state and county funded organization, I acknowledge the financial challenges that COVID-19 has created for our local government. Our mission is to innovate, educate and inspire. In the midst of a pandemic, library staff are already demonstrating their ability to carry out this mission. Through rapidly changing our service models. Our customers can expect virtual programs from us this summer and to interact with us via email to get their questions answered. Customers can now call us and receive assistance as well. Our online collections and resources allow our customers to keep up with their reading from home. And to have access to remote learning resources such as Brainfuse where students can chat live with a tutor. Briefly, I want to go back to the Great Recession. Between fiscal years 2008 and 2009, circulation at the library went up nearly 10%. During a difficult time when households had to make sacrifices, 16% of our customers renewed their library cards. Our program attendance went up 38% as customers sought free resources, activities and information. I am anticipating a similar pattern of increased usage of the public library during and following this pandemic. During this pandemic, the only path to follow is forward. The public library will be integral to community healing. As the governor takes steps to reopen our state, the library is a willing partner to help slow the educational slide for students who are out of the classroom. We are committed to helping our community sift through all of this new information. And connect customers to resources that can help them recover from the pandemic. Digital literacy is a necessity during this time. And the library offers free wifi access at the downtown in Pittsville branches. As well as allowing customers to sign up for library cards online that they can use immediately to access our resources. The public library will also help our unemployed residents find new jobs through our Job Search Center, our job fairs and workshops on workforce development. After so much time apart, the library will bring the community back together as a gathering place and a unifying community space. And speaking of place, I was grateful to see the library's future projects kept in the CIP. Again, I understand that the difficulties of the financial climate does not make it possible to move forward with a new Pittsville location at this time. But I do think it's important that we keep these projects on the radar. Because we want our physical facilities to match the programs and services that we are offering to the community. For 150 years, the library has been an important part of the fabric of Wycomico County. The library is an asset that will help, along with our partners, to continue moving Wycomico County forward toward a brighter, better future. Thank you for supporting the public library.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Darren Lombardo.
Yes, good evening, Council. In review of the county budget. If you please refer to page 131 of the executive county budget for Wycomico County Public Schools. I see a one-time funding request for 2021. Uh, proposed unrestricted current expense budget. Uh, and I, and I'm a little concerned here because I see. The categories are very broad. The following items are listed, uh, replacement document cameras due to aging equipment. Laptop carts for next gen academy. Uh, three replacement whiteboards due to failing equipment. Fencing for multiple schools to ensure student safety. Replacement of student desks in poor condition. Upgrade of aging security camera equipment from analog to HD. Security camera system to ensure student safety. Replacement of sound system and projector in Y middle auditorium due to aging equipment. And school exterior doors to include secure locking mechanisms to help ensure student safety. Those are all very important and wonderful items. But, uh, before any money is provided to the school system for their requested one-time funding. Uh, on behalf of the citizens of Wycomico County, I'm requesting that the council require the following. From Wycomico County Public Schools before any one-time funding requests are approved. And that would be the total number of replacement document cameras needed in three estimates. Uh, the total number of laptop carts that are needed for the next gen academy in three estimates. Number of whiteboards to be replaced. Uh, the number, uh, in, in estimates for that, three estimates. The total number of linear feet of fencing and posts to be replaced or upgraded at the school locations. Uh, three estimates for those. Uh, the total number of replacement desks and three estimates for their bulk purchase. It would also be nice to see a plan to upgrade the surveillance systems. By identifying the specifications to all system components. BBRs, cameras, wiring, et cetera, at each of the schools that are needed. Three estimates for each. Uh, a plan from a sound engineer for the auditorium sound system and the Y middle projector. Uh, and three estimates for that as well. Uh, it'd be nice to see a plan for all doors that will be upgraded or replaced, including their locking mechanisms, the, the types of doors, the dimensions. And, uh, three estimates for those. In order to justify this request. The information should be readily available to the public should anyone request this information. Uh, directly from the county, um, not necessarily from the school system. Uh, that is the greatest concern and that's what I, uh, wanted to share tonight. Thank you.
That's all the public comments I have, um, from the individuals that pre-registered. Um, I don't see any raised hands. Um. So are there any other public comments? If so, you can unmute yourselves. Um, there's a mute button on the bottom left of your screen. You would just unclick that. Um, Mr. President, I, I think that concludes all the public comments for tonight. Um, before council adjourns, whoever, I'd like to go over some budget work session dates, if that is possible.
Yes, that's fine.
Um, so for council members, um. If you can pull out your calendars. And let me know, um, when you would like to start having work sessions on the budget. We did have, um, council staff prepare a memo and a short list of departments that you might want to consider meeting with. We can go over that list if you would like, or if you want to look at the dates first, we can do that. President, what would you prefer to do?
I think we should go over the dates first, um, while we're talking about it. I think everyone should have their calendar out now and, uh, probably as early as next week.
Perhaps start meeting on Monday, the 11th?
Monday, the 11th. That would be a good day for me. We were talking about is, um, starting the day with, um, several hours and if we, um, could, we may be able to knock them all out in one day. How does the 11th sound for everyone?
Would we be starting in the morning?
Yes.
I believe there's a Mako, um, I think there's a Mako training that day.
I don't have it on this calendar. Ms. Harley, do you have that date? Or that training?
I, I do not see anything. Um, if you were to start, say at 10 a.m., I don't, I see on my calendar, it's open and away.
Yeah, if we started at 10, we'd probably get done by 2.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go any longer than 2.
You wouldn't want to go longer than two hours?
No, I wouldn't want to go any longer than 2 o'clock.
Yeah, um, it, if we don't go over the allotted times, we should be able to get done by then. I believe I calculated less than four hours. For the requested departments.
Did you want to start a little bit earlier to allow some time for lunch?
I, well, I think the, uh, members are going to need lunch, so it might be a good idea to start at nine. I'm okay with nine if everyone's okay with that time.
We'll schedule it then for May the 11th at 9 a.m.
Well, do, do we really need an hour for lunch? Can't we just do a half hour to start at 9:30 and do 20, 30 minutes for lunch? Five hours is a long, long time to carve out and the work doing.
We may be able to get done with lunch in a half hour and then if we get done early, we can all leave early. Sound okay?
It's good.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, can we now go over the list that, um, you may want to meet with? We're looking at the executive administration and community promotions, um, that they're both the same departments. It's Fund 5 and Fund 6, but, um, I believe administration would speak on both of those funds. We're looking at IT Department, um, 15. Then you have volunteer fire and ambulance, this Department 19.
Let me back up. Why are we meeting with IT?
I believe it was the 14% overall increase that, uh, is suggested that we review. It would help, uh, I think the guideline we're following, Bill, is what Levin took the time to put together. Um, it's, um, an email he sent out called Memo 5-6-2020. I think he just, when, when did you email that? When did he mail that, uh, today?
Looks like today.
Yeah, it was today.
Yeah, it was just a few hours ago.
Yeah, what, yeah, what time was that? Yeah, because I've, I'm not that current on my emails.
I saw it in the afternoon. And that's why.
You replied, you replied in the string, Bill. It was in the.
It, it's the one that I said that we, we should, we should include the, um, State's Attorney's Office.
Yeah, the, the subject line, the subject line is budget pre-analysis. It was sent at 3:30.
Yeah, because that, that first one, I didn't have an attachment with it.
And I'll forward it to you real quick, Bill.
Yeah, forward that to me, yeah, because, because I didn't have an attachment and I saw Larry's response, but I couldn't even. Yeah, I couldn't even see what the response was to. For some reason.
I just sent it back out to, uh, county council.
Thank you.
Yep. But essentially the, the memo, the, um, the recommendations were based upon, uh, overall increase in their budgets or major category salary, operating capital, et cetera. Uh, IT had a 14% overall increase in their budget.
Okay.
Continuing down that list, we have, um, volunteer fire and ambulance fund, our Department 19 and 20. Public works, we would want to, um, speak with both the roads division as well as the solid waste division. And then you have lease vehicles, Department 47, and I believe that was all under purchasing. Um, there's been a couple of recommendations, um, for the Board of Education to come in. Um, the State's Attorney's Office that was just discussed in the airport.
Right.
Laura, what about the law department? There has been. There was a pretty big increase in their budget.
And, and I, I agree with you. I, I made a note of that. Went from 318 to 347,000.
Yeah, that's.
But who's going to come in to speak on the law department?
I just, I recommend we send that question to Mr. Strasburg for a response.
I agree.
I mean, I think it at least needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Ms. Harley, you got that?
I do. Is everyone okay with all of those departments, including the law department?
We don't need, I mean, we don't need them to come in if we send them an email, if we get a response.
Right, understood.
Does it need to be public though? Like. Does it need to be something that's done publicly or do you just read the email response?
I, I think you can get the response from Mr. Strasburg and that would just go to all county council members.
Okay, uh, this is my first one, so I'm sorry if I'm asking. Obvious questions, I just.
It's a good question.
Not sure how it works.
Thank you for that question. Ms. Harley? Are we done?
I think we're done. We have it set for May the 11th and we'll include all the departments that I just went down, that was said I just went down.
Starting at 9 a.m. Um, is there any more discussion before we conclude this meeting?
I. I guess I just have some questions on some of the things that we fund, but I mean, it's something we could discuss later.
Yeah, we can discuss on Monday. Okay.
I would like to hope that at some time we can begin meeting back in, uh, council chambers. Uh, the governor started relaxing some of the, um, you know, restrictions today. The airport commission, I think, held a very successful meeting in council chambers. And I think we could do that. I think there's enough room for us. We don't all have to sit behind that one table. And I think we could orchestrate it where we could spread out a little more, put a few more tables out in the area where the, where the visitors sit. I definitely think we should do that.
Yes, Mr. Cannon, we already talked about this and it, it's a good idea, but we were told that, um. PAC 14 may not be able to do it with all the Zoom, but I think it's already been proven that it can be done.
Well, we wouldn't be zooming. We would just be, um, having a, a work session in the chambers.
Okay, well, we just had a question asking if it would be virtual, so.
Well.
But it, but I'm wondering if there would be enough room for all the council members and the staff.
To be six feet distance.
Uh, well, I, I'm just suggesting we should maybe look at trying to orchestrate it.
I, I, it's a great idea. If we have to set up additional tables and spread council members out, I'm okay with that.
But does, doesn't it have to be open to the public?
It does.
It does. It does.
I mean, we wouldn't be able to do that, unfortunately, so.
Bill, um, being somewhat, uh, there's very few council work sessions that we've. Bill, um, being somewhat, uh, there's very few council work sessions that we've had on the budget. Where there have been that many people that have come in to sit in on the meetings.
No, I mean, I realize that, but we have to make it available to the public.
Could it be so, could it be sort of hybrid like the, uh, airport public hearing was the other night? Wasn't that in the chambers and people were still calling in?
Well, the works, it's a good point, Levin, but the work session really isn't, um, a work session that allows for public discussion regardless. Uh, when we're doing the work session, the benefit to the public is to come and listen.
So really, just as long as we got an audio that, you know, people in the public can hear, you know, you know, they even have to visually see it.
Right, because we're not going to be having interaction with the public. I mean, it, it's a work session where we typically don't have interaction. And are you suggesting Monday?
Hopefully, it would be streamed by PAC fourteen and they can put it on, on the websites. People could watch it, just like they would be watching Zoom or participating in Zoom.
Yeah, because they also have the YouTube channel.
Yeah, exactly.
PAC fourteen can do it a couple of ways. They can do it live, um, or they can just do a recording and then replay it. Are we talking about them to broadcast it live?
I, I would, um, yeah, I would hope so, yes.
Yeah, honestly, why not? That way the citizens will see it sooner. You think we can do it Monday? Ms. Harley?
I, I mean, that's entirely up to council. I mean, the, the chambers is available. I did check on that before tonight's meeting. Um, and if that's how council wants to proceed, I can definitely set it up that way.
And you do have to realize that we'll still have to wear our mask. And I, I was watching some of the members on the Airport Commission, um, that were, uh, constantly adjusting their mask. And sometimes they couldn't be heard adequately, so it's up to you. If you want to fight the mask, I don't, I don't mind doing it.
It, it was very difficult to hear them with the mask. I mean, I thought it was. There, I thought it was hard to hear them.
I think, I think we would need to be, be conscious of, you know, that we are wearing masks and that we speak closely into the microphone. I think, I think we need to meet publicly. Um, uh, the interaction between the council members, I think, is important. Um, when, when we start working on this budget. Uh, the room, the room's a big room. Um, I think we can separate ourselves safely. I would like to see us do that.
Okay, um, how about if I do a roll call vote? Um, if you're in favor of meeting Monday in the council chambers, say aye. If you oppose, say nay. So it's starting with Vice President Cannon. Councilman Ernie Davis. Councilman Ernie Davis. Councilwoman Nicole Ackley.
Um, President, I, I would like to maybe get some advice from Lori Brewster on the guidelines for this. I'm really indifferent. I just want to make sure that we're staying within. The guidelines the state has put forward.
Well, like we just said, there was a meeting, uh, held last Thursday night in the chambers.
Where's the cat?
Is that a, a yea or a nay? And then. You say nay, uh.
No, I said yes, that's fine.
Oh, was it? Yeah, okay. Councilman Hastings.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm going with whatever else anyone wants.
Okay, Councilman Holloway.
I'm okay, let's go.
Councilman McCain.
I'm, I'm kind of like, oh, Ms. Ackley, I'm indifferent.
No, she said, did you want to say yea or nay?
Did you say you're indecisive, Bill?
Yes.
First time for everything.
I say, I'll, I'll do whatever, but.
Okay.
I don't have a strong feeling on it one way or the other.
I, I, as long as we're being safe is what I'm saying. I, I don't want the public to get the idea that we're not, you know, they're not. So in that sense, I think we can find a way to make it work.
We'll do six feet.
I like the idea of put, put, having the tables out.
I'll bring my measuring tape.
Um, Ms. Harley, um, I don't know, um, if you have access to anyone from PAC fourteen. But if for some reason a council member can't make it, would they be able to zoom the meeting?
Um, Mr. Twilly, are you on the video? Um, do you have a answer to that question?
If there was a, a reason that one council member couldn't make it. Okay, so that, that would be an option, but right now, um, haven't heard from Councilman Davis. But the, the rest of the council members said yea that we will be meeting Monday at nine AM in the council chambers.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gibson, uh, had made a request to speak again.
Okay, I didn't see that. Um, Ms. Harley, can you unmute him if he's muted?
Sure, give me a second. He should be able to unmute himself as well.
I'm, I'm muted now. I appreciate that. I just want to say, uh, I appreciate you, you having this and, and trying to figure out a way to do it publicly. Um, my main concern is, as a citizen and county member, is to please just try to make this as announced it to the public. So they can participate, because I think the reason that we don't have a lot of participation is because it was very confusing with the Tuesday council meeting. And then the Wednesday public information meeting, not really getting out to the public, you know, via social media or the news sources. So if we can make this announcement as widely as possible, that would be greatly appreciated. Because then that way we're not, you know, you're just not talking amongst yourselves.
It will do that.
And we did send our, um, public hearing notice to a media group. Um, just, and, and it is posted on the website as well, so we did do some outreach.
We really don't have social media, but we're, we're going to have to work on that.
Oh, just currently, I told, Ms. Hurley, I totally appreciate what you do. Um, the, the council meeting, this open session for Wednesday was like very deep in the webpage for the Wycomico County. So if it could be on the front page of the Wycomico County webpage, that would be ideal.
Yeah, I did make that request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And maybe some of the council members will be sharing it on their social media pages.
Yeah, you're right, Larry. I mean, uh, Mr. Gibson makes a really good point. I think we really need to try to figure out how to get that message out to the public. Uh, in more untraditional ways. Maybe, uh, Josh can help us figure that one out as well.
I agree.
Starting to figure out Facebook. I'm, I'm a little late in the game, but I'm starting to figure it out.
That's trouble.
It's an important tool. Everyone's using it. So any more discussion on this? That said, uh, need a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Yeah, I need, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
See you, uh, at least on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Monday, thank you.